Thank you. Hi, welcome. We're going to start our meeting. Our first order of business is to approve our minutes from last, from our last meeting. Does anybody want to make a motion there?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We are going to take things a little out of order since we have a couple continued, we have a continued petition from last meeting and one new petition. So, we're going to start with petition 2512, which is for 371 Paradise Road. And I believe we have Ken Schutzer representing.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great, great. I wasn't sure, but thank you very much. Yes, following up from the last meeting, if I could just take the prerogative of sort of recapping my understanding of where we were. We had discussed the, the number of signs, in this case would be four, the distance between the signs, which is 15 feet, and the size of the signs. What was problematic was the fact that the signs were lettering and not informational. So, we went through a number of permutations of what we thought would best describe the product in a way that was as tasteful as we could. What you're ultimately seeing now is probably the fourth or fifth version. I've, I actually supplied one about a week ago, and then there was another change that we had given you, and I believe that's what you have now. So, so these signs will appear, and the size they are, on the exterior of the building as depicted with the, with the information, the, on the signs as you see them now, which is more pictorial than it is lettering. There's no lettering on these signs. So, we hopefully have addressed the question that you had raised. Hopefully, we have addressed the concerns that were outlined, and hopefully now at this point, short of any other issues that we haven't formally addressed, we, we believe that this hopefully will meet the criteria and allow you to permit, and by granting a special permit for the signage as initially requested. Thank you.
Does anybody on the board have feedback?
So, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I think that these are a great improvement, and I very much appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this. At the risk of sounding picky, I really don't love the cigar. I don't know if there's, I don't know the law on tobacco advertising, I just don't, and I don't know if that's something we can even discuss in this meeting, but that just gave me pause, so I just wanted to raise that concern.
Well, I know that earlier along when we had the awning, on the awning, we had indicated that, that was a product that would, that was being sold. I, we, this, by the way, is not the first cigar that we have tried to create, because the first one was a little lower towards the glass, it had more smoke coming out of it. We, we didn't want to accentuate the cigar, but we wanted people to know that along with, with the, with the drink, that we also sold cigars. Just in order to afford people an opportunity to know the product that was being sold. It was, it's more than just liquor. I suspect anyone who goes there knows that, but, but we thought that it was done in the most tasteful way we could. I'm not sure that there's any prohibition on doing that. I've seen these, these signs for tobacco all over the place. We're not selling just tobacco, we're just selling cigars that would be, I guess, I don't smoke cigars, but I guess those that do in, in these rooms, when they have their brandy or whatever, it's not uncommon. So, that was the thinking behind it. I don't know if Angela has any further thoughts that she wanted to, to add to that. And Sarah, who's also, if she can be allowed, I'm not sure. Angela, are you muted, or can you answer that question?
I'm here, I raised my hand, not sure if you can hear me.
We can hear you, yep.
Okay. So, the reason why we chose that is because bourbons and scotches and a lot of the liquors are mostly enjoyed with a cigar. So, it's something, as Ken said, we, we do carry it, and it's just, it's showing, these four banners are mostly showing the enjoyment of how people enjoy the alcohol. You know, it's a celebration, it's a pour, we're trying to capture the celebration of how they drink their alcohol, and what happens when they do. So, that was kind of the background of why we came to that, because it's one of, we've been in the cigar business for over 25, 30 years. You know, it's, it's, it's one of our main stays that we have at the store. It's not a minor product that we carry. It's something that really accentuates what we already sell with alcohol, it complements a lot of it.
Okay. And then I'm looking at the old signage that used to be there, and I do see that it says cigars, so thank you for pointing that out, Ken.
If, if there is any law, state law, that requires some type of notice or disclaimer, we don't have jurisdiction over that, that would continue. So, if they have some obligation to have a warning or anything, that would, that's outside of our jurisdiction.
Yeah, okay. Okay, those are my only comments, thank you.
Who, whose comments were they? I, from my screen, I can't tell who the speaker is.
Michelle Graham.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Very public comments on that.
Yeah, is anybody here to speak on this petition? And anyone online, you can use the raise your hand function. Seeing none. I think this is a great improvement. I appreciate you making the effort to really go with a more design as opposed to all the text. Definitely is a, is a big improvement. And, yeah.
Thank you.
It's like a billboard and more like it's a, it's decor, and it's part of the design of the building. All right, does anybody want to make a motion on this?
I'll, I'll make a motion, and okay, and I'll help you with the decision.
You will, you know, I'm, right now, I'm in Arizona, and.
But when you get back, there will be pressure.
I, I will do that, I will do that. As a matter of fact, maybe I'll even leave early so I can get this decision done. But thank you very much. And, you know, I was so, I was so concerned that I wasn't going to be able to get on, that's why I always appear at the meetings. But it's working very well, and I just want to thank all those that assisted in the process, especially Krista, because I, I spoke with her this morning, and she assured me that I would, that I could get through, and sure enough, I was able to do that. So, thank you again.
Sure, so I'm going to make a motion on petition 25-12 for a signed special permit for the addition of the four banner signs on the commercial building at 371 Paradise Road.
The relief that we're seeking is the number of signs, the distance between the signs, and the size of the signs.
So, relief for all of those items, and to approve the signs as shown on the filing that was submitted. Looking just for some reference on.
I think there's a date, September, was it the ninth? I, I'm not sure, I'm doing this.
That's, yes, September 9/25, I see that, so we can attach that, Ken, to the decision.
Yes.
It's one, two, three, four, five pages.
Five pages, correct.
I think that's all I really need.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who made the second, just so I can take note of that?
Tony Sanchez.
Tony, okay, thank you, Tony. Okay.
All right, thank you.
So, the vote is five to nothing?
Yes.
Is it unanimous?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you all once again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we are going to move on to petition 2516, which is 25 Farragut Road, and I believe we have Walter Jacob Architects to give their presentation.
Hey. Hello, everybody, I'm Walter Jacob, 89 Front Street Marblehead, I'm the architect for 25 Farragut Road. My clients, Laura Kappas and Ryan Dullman are here with us, and I'm going to present with the boards here, and I guess I will coordinate what goes up on the screen. We submitted today a narrative to help explain what we're asking for here. The confusing thing, or possibly, possibly is that we've asked for both a variance with an alternate for a special permit. And in general terms, the reason for that is we have an existing house that's very close to the side yard setback, it's closer than the 20% that's allowed by special permit, and we'd like to extend that house back 5.5 feet to enlarge a kitchen. And the issue is, is that the property line doesn't align with the house. So, as we move back 5.5 feet, we go from 3.1 feet from the setback to 2.8, which increases the request for relief. And I'll show you that in our survey and our drawings. The alternate solution, in your bylaw, you, you allow exemption from the relief being called a variance if the encroachment gets no greater. So, if we were to move the proposed kitchen in five inches to the rear of the house, we would then be under a special permit. But what I'd like to show you in our drawings is that, you know, we're already in that area. To bump in five inches is somewhat of a hardship, because we're in the middle of a kitchen, and it would, you know, the cabinets would end up being five inches shorter along the length of the house. So, that's the reason we came in with this proposal on paper at first, because of the side yard being at the different angle than the house, it becomes a variance according to your bylaw. There's a slight adjustment we could make to make it a special permit, but with that said, I'd like to start to go through the drawings. This project has been through the historic board, and they approved it. I'd like to bring up first the photographs, so I'll put them here so that we can coordinate what goes on the screen. So, we have a locust map, can everyone hear me without the microphone? We have a locust map, here's 25 Farragut Road, we have two neighbors on each side that the area, the addition is to the rear of the house. We've talked to both of those neighbors about what we're doing, they seem to not have any issue with it, or they are very supportive. The photographs that you'll see will show the house in different angles. If anybody wants me to bring this closer, if you can't see them in the package, I will explain things, but to the rear of the house, which is a very historic house, there are some small additions that don't really stand up to the historic character, they're not built very well, and our proposal is to remove or renovate those additions and put a one-slash-two-story addition. The one-story addition is to one side of it, that's the part that encroaches on the setback.
Oh, hold on, just one second.
Okay. Here we go. So, there's a one-story addition, which is the one that encroaches on the side yard setback, and that's primarily what I'll be discussing. So, the next image would be the survey.
If you could zoom in on that one a little bit for people at home.
And I have a larger version of it too, so I can zoom in on paper, but in general, here's the survey, here's Farragut Road, here's the house, and then in the lower rear corner is where we have our encroachment. Now, I'll bring my larger picture up like I'm zooming in. So, this is a zoomed in version of the rear of the house. This line here represents the seven and a half foot side yard setback requirement. What we want to do, there's a kitchen here, and it's small, so we want to make it larger. We want to extrude back 5.25 feet. But what happens is, by doing that, because these angles don't line up, instead of being 3.1 feet from the side yard setback, we end up being 2.8 feet from the side yard setback. If we were to bump this in five inches, both of these numbers, 3.1 and the 2.8, would become 3.1. And under the bylaw, if the, if you make an addition that doesn't come any closer, we believe that is a special permit, and I can read that portion if you would like, but that's how I interpret things. So, what we'd like to do is first ask for a variance to extrude back 5.25 feet, and build the kitchen and the addition like we'd like it, or if that's not acceptable, if we haven't shown a hardship, or that it's not detrimental, ask for a special permit. We know that we have to ask for either one of those to do this.
So, just real quick, with the Balalta case, which is the one that allows that continuing of the non-conformity, there, there is a way to, there are kind of two pathways. One is that you are going to continue, like you said, you're not going to get any further, you're going to do that five inch jog, and you're going to stay, and then that can be done with just a finding, because that is not creating a new non-conformity. If you continue to encroach and come closer, you are, you are extending that non-conformity, and then our board would have to make a decision as to whether or not that non-conformity was more detrimental.
Substantially more detrimental.
Was substantially more detrimental than the current pre-existing non-conformity. So, both of those are done, can be done through, through the special permit, or even just with a finding on the first one. Now, what I would say is, in this situation, the variance, the variance path isn't there for you, because you need to have a very specific criteria for a topographical hardship, which you don't have, but there is an opportunity for either one of these to go through, through the, without needing a variance. So, I just wanted to explain that now, if that makes sense, and if you have any questions about that. It's basically whether or not the, the furthering, the encroachment creates a substantially more detriment, is substantially more detrimental than the current non-conformity.
To, to the neighborhood.
To the neighborhood.
So, I would argue that without bumping in five, it's only a five inch difference along the property line where the house already exists, and in that current location, there's actually an awning that sticks out in the area that we want to build, the one-story addition, you'll see that in the photographs. So, ideally, we would like to extrude straight back like the proposal that we have in front of you, and the setbacks, the setback would be 2.8 in this lower corner. I also have other drawings that show the elevations of the house, three dimensionals, and the plans, if you'd like to see any.
Yeah, that would be great, we, we all have them in our packet, but if anybody's here from the public to see them, that would be great.
So, this drawing, 8.2, shows the basement level and the first level, the basement isn't changing, the first level, you'll see our existing drawing, where we have our kitchen back here, and the proposed drawing, it's five and a half feet longer. And you can see that the existing kitchen is in that area. We looked at options, can we put the kitchen over here, but, you know, it doesn't make sense, there's an existing kitchen already there, to move it to the other side of the house would, where it's not in the setback, would cause us to relocate all the plumbing and the kitchen, and also wouldn't work with the circulation. We have a porch here, so that makes sense, there's a mudroom there. So, the location of the kitchen makes a lot of sense, and that's why we put it there. There is a two-story addition here, but that's not in any of the side yard setbacks. Next drawing, I'll bring up our the elevations, and you'll see the front elevation, which essentially doesn't change. The work is in the rear, and you'll see the rear elevation. And I think if you look at the photographs, what we're proposing, you know, works a lot better architecturally than, and historically than what is there. And we have a couple of three-dimensional drawings that show, from the front, a bird's eye view. One of the things we're doing, which isn't in the side yard setback, is continuing the porch around to reach the rear, so that it functions well, and we think historically it looks nicer to the rear of the house. This is where our two-story addition is, this is the area where we're talking about this one-story addition, so this small area back here. And that kind of hopefully sums it up in a nutshell, and I realize I ignored everybody out here, but does anybody want to see anything? And does anybody have questions, or is there anything I can explain more?
Does anybody on the board have questions?
I do not.
No. Now, is anybody here, any abutters here to speak on this, or anyone to speak on this petition? And if you're online, please use the raise your hand function. And you've spoken with the abutters on that side of the property?
Yes.
So, I definitely think with the Balalta case, the finding, the finding would be that it is, if we, if you don't do the five inch setback, that you are more non-conforming than the current structure, you are getting closer. So, then we have a second sort of evaluation to make, and is that substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conformity? I think in this case, where this is in the back of the house, this is not something that you're seeing from the front, the abutter is not concerned with, with the encroachment, and has, are there any, the trees or anything that you have to take down to, to be those in that area?
No, actually, I think, you know, what we're putting there is probably an improvement of what's over there. Right now, it's a storage area and not so well-done additions and an awning.
We keep our trash cans back there, so we'll not be keeping our trash cans.
They'll be moved to a more central location in the property, the storage area.
So, I mean, I, I think it, I mean, I can argue that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels.
I agree with you.
I, I think it's, it's a relatively minor, and I'm, you know, it's so ironic that if it were conforming.
You couldn't do it.
You couldn't do it.
There'd be no way, there'd be no, if, if the house was conforming, there'd be no pathway forward, which is crazy.
Well, it'd be a variance, extraordinary.
That you don't, that you don't, that you wouldn't qualify for. So, it's a very strange, this is state law that we've kind of newly, not newly, I guess we've been doing it for a while now, but kind of, yeah, been, been affecting our hearings, and it seems to come up pretty much constantly, because we're in a town with a lot of non-conforming structures already, that are already in the setback. So, you strangely get more.
Leeway.
More leeway, yeah, when you're already non-conforming. So, I'm, I'm prepared to, to say this is not substantially more detrimental, if anybody.
I agree with that.
All right. All right. So in this case, is it a finding that it's not, or is it a special permit?
Do you want me to make a motion?
Yeah, I think you can make the motion. And I don't mind writing it if, if you need me to.
That'd be great. Okay, so on petition 2516, 25 Farragut Road, I will make a motion to approve the petition and a finding under the Balalta case that the pre-existing nonconforming structure, the modification there, too, to increase, that the, the addition will increase the nonconforming nature of the structure by extending further into the side yard setback, and that such change, extension or alteration is not substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood. And to approve the work as proposed, allowing it to extend as shown on the plan submitted by Walter Jacob Architects August 22, 25.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you very much. Let me know if you need anything.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, no problem.
All right. We don't want to say.
Two quick ones?
I know. All right. So we are now going to open the public hearing for petition number 2515, which is the 40B project at Pine Street, which is also known as Veterans Crossing. I am going to first ask the petitioner to give their presentation. I'm going to let the board ask questions, and then we are going to open it up to public comment. So there will be an opportunity for people here to ask questions. We just ask that you hold those questions until we open it up for public comment, please. I just want everyone here to understand that there, that no decisions are being made today. The ZBA has 180 days to make a final decision on this project. We have retained the services of a professional consultant who will be here to help us through the process. They are not here today, but they're going to watch this meeting and review the materials submitted, and they will help guide us through the, through the process. And he will also be making some recommendations, I'm sure, throughout the process. So even if after today you don't hear, okay, these are, these are the more information that we need, we're going to probably consult with him, and then he'll reach out to you and let you know what, what information that is. So, let's see. So that's it. We're going to let you start, and then I just want everyone to know, we will have an opportunity for questions. We're just going to do that after the presentation. All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great. Good evening. For the record, my name is John Smolak with the firm of Smolak &amp; Vaughn based in North Andover, attorney for the applicant BBH Community Development LLC. What I'd like to do first is introduce you, members of the project team, many of whom you'll hear from this evening. First, we have Holly Grace and Yara Verigut, senior project managers with Beneath Housing, also Jacob Lemieux with Hancock Associates, our project engineer, and Chris Curland of the architectural team, our project architect. There are a lot of other members of our team that you see on the slide. All I'll mention is that obviously not all of them are here this evening, but we also have on the team Vanessa Associates, our traffic engineering consultant, as well as Emmanuel, Emmanuel Associates, our project landscape architect. So this evening, what we plan to do is provide just a general overview of the proposed project, which, as you know, is a 41-unit, age-restricted housing project called Veterans Crossing, which will also include a veterans preference, and located within a single building along with other parking, landscaping and other improvements at the property now known and numbered as 20 Pine Street. As you may be aware, the process with the town began for Beneath Housing over two years ago. The towns are pre-being issued for the property with multiple reviews that had occurred since that time, actually before the, our application was filed with the board. But recognizing that this project is brand-new to this board, what we plan to do is, is cover for our agenda, as you see on the, on the presentation slide, is we first will introduce you to the applicant and its sponsor, Beneath Housing, and learn a little bit more about them. Then we'll proceed with a general overview of Veterans Crossing and the process undertaken to date. That'll be followed by a description of site layout, engineering and stormwater matters, and then follow that with architectural design and elevations and views that will be presented. And then we'll conclude with a discussion of community benefits and next steps for the project. Before we begin our presentation, I did want to mention a little bit in terms of our application that we filed with the board. We feel we've filed a complete application under the comprehensive permit regulations at the state level 760 CMR 56. In terms of what we've submitted, the materials and the materials that you have includes a project eligibility letter that was issued back on July 16th of this year by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, or HLC. And that project eligibility letter confirms that the project's eligible for a subsidy under the low-income housing tax credit program. The letter also confirms that based on HLC's review of the site and the related information that was filed as part of our project eligibility letter application, that the site's appropriate location for multifamily housing, the project is, design is appropriate for the site, and the project's financially feasible for the subsidy that's being requested. And lastly, that the applicant controls the site by virtue of an option in land development agreement that had been entered into by the town and the applicant. And so we've also included other materials as part of the comprehensive permit application that are required by the regulations, which include the preliminary development plans, the civil and landscaping plans, the architectural plans, a report of existing conditions, and other materials that you see in, in your application. In addition to the project eligibility letter, there is a set of waivers that have been requested from local requirements. And in addition, we've included a traffic report and a stormwater management report as well to round out that application. And so with that said, we'd like to begin our presentation, unless the chair wants anything further to add.
Thank you.
Thank you. And at this point, we'd like to turn the discussion over to Holly Grace for Beneath Housing.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. For the record, my name is Holly Grace. I work as a senior project manager for Beneath Housing. So I want to introduce Beneath Housing. For anyone that's not familiar with what we do, we are the project sponsor of this development, and BBH, as we call ourselves for short, is a nonprofit organization. We have a very active board, and our mission is to, just on the slide, but some of it, to help ease the housing crisis, and we work in the Boston area to do that. We have a portfolio with many senior housing units, and we work with service providers in the area to help serve the needs of our residents who live in our properties. We also like to work in partnership with towns and cities to help achieve the housing goals that are set out by the local communities, including this one here. We are located in Boston and the surrounding areas, and all of our properties are in the Boston area. Next slide, please. So for our senior properties, and I guess all of our rental properties, we use a service-enriched housing model, and this basically helps serve the needs of tenants living in our properties, which are generally all affordable. And within the apartment communities, there are staff people who work onsite, including a resident service coordinator, who helps meet with the tenants and gets to know the tenants, and learns their interests and their needs and even their hardships. The resident service coordinator helps plan and program a schedule of social wellness and community-building activities. Some of the photos are in our presentation of those things. In addition, like during COVID, we had some food provisions and different things like that. But there's also quieter activities that the resident service coordinators do in meeting with the residents and working with them one-on-one to help link them as needed with services or extra help as they age or encounter health difficulties. So the resident service coordinator would link to home care agencies, help apply for certain benefits, they might be eligible for help work on transportation challenges. So what we, we build is not assisted living, to make that clear. It's independent living for these seniors, but there is this layer of help that's available if they need it. Also onsite with the resident service coordinator is professional property management that works in the building. Next slide, please. Oh, wait, there's one more. Oh, we didn't get to that one? There it is. Oh, okay. So anyway, this is demonstrating that we have professional management. And here in Swam Scott, we have many, wait, did I say it without order? Oh, I did it out of order, sorry. We have resident services proposed to work with Soldier On, who's an organization that works very closely with veterans and whose mission is to try to eliminate veteran homelessness. And more on Mashan, which I went out of order, sorry, Yara. So here in Swam Scott, we, one of our properties in our portfolio is the Mashan. And we were before this board permitting it in 2017, some familiar names and faces, so thank you very much for that. The development was completed in 2021, constructed during a pandemic. It's fully occupied and 38 units senior, has the resident service model in action here in Swam Scott, like these photos, some of them show. It has literally won awards from affordable housing organizations. We are very proud of it, and I hope the town is, too. It was done in partnership with the town, and somewhat through this process with Veterans Crossing was a model of how we've arrived where we are today with this. So this slide on the screen shows a lot of dates, which I'm not going to talk about in depth, but they're there, should you want to look at them. So we've been working on Veterans Crossing with town officials since 2023, when the RFP was issued, and throughout these years, the, I guess, vision for Veterans Crossing and thoughts from town leadership have evolved, and there have been staff changes and leadership changes in the town. And I guess key things to know is that the select board and BBH have a LGA, a land disposition agreement, which is basically like a purchase and sale agreement for this development. It has certain binding terms and reviews that the select board has to go through for our plans to help us get to certain milestones, including this meeting tonight. So we understand that it's the first time. Your board has likely seen these plans, but the select board has been, has had previews and information along the way. So the structure in the land agreement is a 99-year ground lease, which will begin at construction closing, and the town will maintain ownership of the land, and we will have the ground lease for it for 99 years. And so during the evolution of this development during the past two years, there have been certain attributes that you've seen in the plans that have been submitted to you and that we're presenting tonight. Thank you, Yara. So the key decisions that are in the plan set that you have and that have been reviewed prior to us being here are that the development is three stories tall, not four. The VFW facility is being relocated offsite. We are maximizing the building setback from Erie Street. We are maximizing onsite parking. We have 35 spaces that currently fit on the site, and we're minimizing the impact of mechanical equipment, which is shown on the roof. There'll be more discussion about that. So these, I call attention to these because we may come back to these issues later this evening, because what we're accomplishing on this interesting town-owned site requires some push and pull of some of the different design variables that we'll be talking about. Next slide, please, okay. And so our overall goals for the development, well, first of all, BBH is a long-term owner as a nonprofit, Boston-based, board involvement. We plan to be owning and operating Veterans Crossing and the Mashan for a long time. We love this community and are excited to be, be here. So that's the perspective we take in these, these developments. We want to create high-quality homes for veterans and seniors and meet the very big need that there is for them. Have a well-constructed building, have a design that blends with the neighborhood, something that we can all be proud of, and to be actively managed. So we want this building to continue to shine and sparkle into the future, and we'll work actively to make that happen. Can I turn it over to you, Yara?
Sure. Good evening. My name, oh, my name is Yara Verigut. I am a senior project manager with Beneath Housing, and we're gonna, I'll be discussing a little bit about the development project, program, who will be able, who will qualify and who will be living in the, in these, in this 41-unit building. And then I will talk a little bit about the site location and then pass it on to our design team. So as previously mentioned, we, this building has 41 units, and they are all 100% affordable units. There is a breakdown in terms of average, medium income of these units. We have 23 of those units will be available to households that earn 30% of AMI, and 18 of the units will be available to households that earn 60% of AMI. There is a chart below here, and it's also further detailed in the, in the, in the handout that we passed that goes into sort of further, in further explanations about income qualification and restrictions and preferences. This is, I just wanted to sort of highlight that this, these are the incomes and the sort of projected rents that are, that are current, currently today, but they obviously will change in the course of, of the project. On the, on the, on the handout, you have a sample of a potential estimated occupation days and the lottery process that will happen, all these. So there will be a lottery process for these units, and, and there is sort of two levels of qualifications. One is a restriction where, you know, you have to meet those restrictions, which is the income, as I discussed, and also you need to be a senior at 55 and over. Responding to the, the goal of the, the project, as the, the town set out, the RFP, original RFP, there is a veterans preference, that is the first preference of the project. So they will get, as, when the lottery occurs, they will get first preference. And then there is a local preference as well. So that local veteran, local veterans have first preference, then veterans, then local, local residents, and then others. So, but again, there's a little further detail on that in the handout. Just a little bit about the site before we go into the design of the building. I'm sure you're all familiar where this is located. It's a very, the site is in a, centrally located, fantastic location for seniors. It is in walking distance to the senior center and town hall, which helps connect, helps social connection, and something that we know and we've heard is very important for seniors and veterans, the veterans population as well, and it helps them live independently as they age in place. It is only a half mile from the Mashan or other property that Holly was mentioning, and this means that our staff can easily support both communities, and residents will have the opportunity to share activities and make connections. and residents will have the opportunity to share activities and make connections. The... This map shows the site in its residential context. We can see sort of the property, the property boundaries and nearby pedestrian routes and transit stops. The location is less than a half a mile from the commuter rail station and right on the bus lines, the 441 and 442 bus lines. So there is excellent access to public transportation. This shows an aerial view of the site as it is... Is it currently? Sorry, I lost my... You guys are seeing this. Apologies. This is the site as it currently looks, exists today. There's a current VFW building along Pine Street and an adjacent vacant lot. The combined project site is 0.84 acres. So in partnering with this town, making the redevelopment of this underutilized lot possible shows a strong example of the town's commitment to reuse municipal land for community benefit. So this site provides various opportunities. A three-story bill... This is sort of a... The site... It provides opportunities, as we've discussed, for service-generated housing, comfortable residences with accessibility features, which will... Our architect, Chris, will discuss a little bit further. They are... The residences will be 100% visitable. So it's not only about the residents, but their visitors and friends that will be able to come and access the building. We're improving site access and pedestrian connections. And this property is... Has a goal of meeting strong environmental sustainability and climate resilience goals. And just a little bit about those goals. We are meeting the specialized opting code for that Swamp Scott through the passive house. The FIAS Core 2024 is passive house. So we are meeting the sort of the... One of the strictest energy standards. And we also will be meeting Enterprise Green Communities, Energy Star, and other related programs. Our design is going to be highly... It's going to be a high-performance building envelope, all-electric systems, and water and energy-saving fixtures. We will study the capability... We will study the feasibility of PV solar and the capability of the roof. And there will be EV chargers, 10% EV charging stations, and 10% EV-ready parking. It is a smart location to be redeveloped near transit, and we have stormwater systems to reduce runoff and improve resiliency. And with that, I will pass it on to Jacob Lemieux, our civil engineer.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Jacob Lemieux. I'm with Hancock Associates out of 315 Elm Street. I'm the civil engineer on the project. I'll be taking you through the existing conditions and the proposed site layout, grading, erosion control, and stormwater, as well as traffic and landscaping. Go to the next slide, please. So the existing conditions onsite right now. This was originally two separate parcels. We've combined the parcels into one. The parcel's primarily covered by parking or concrete foundation. There's the VFW on the western side of the parcel with a parking lot. And the right side of the parcel, or the west side of the parcel, is covered in a concrete foundation and pavement from the prior building that was onsite. There's an existing subsurface culvert that runs along the northern property line and also cuts through the middle of the site, which we will be relocating that part that cuts through the middle of a site in kind as a part of our project, working with the town. Next slide. So we will be installing a construction fence and straw wattle erosion controls around the entire perimeter of the project. That will ensure that there's minimal runoff into the roadways and no silt gets into the public stormwater system. We'll be installing filter sacks and catch basins prior to construction. And we'll have two construction entrances, one through the VFW parking lot and one off of Erie Street. Go to the next page. This is an overhead of the site layout. As you can see, there's a parking area on the west and a... The building is on the east. Through our approvals, we're working with the Select Board. We've modified the building and pushed it further away from Erie Street, so we're really helping to minimize the impact of the structure on that intersection there. We've got our 35 parking spaces in the parking lot. This is a two-way circulation. We have two handicap spaces. One will be van-accessible. We'll also have three EV-ready spaces. One of those will be the van-accessible parking lot. I mean, the van-accessible space. In the upper left-hand corner of the parking lot area, there is a dumpster enclosure, which will be a wooden slat fence with a gate in it, and the dumpsters inside, and also a outdoor shelter for smokers or basically anybody waiting out in the rain there. That is enclosed on three sides to ensure that none of... No smoke wafts over into the abutting properties. Can we go to the next slide? So stormwater onsite will be managed through the lines that you see in orange on the plan attached. We've got two drain lines that run adjacent to the building on either side, which transfer the roof drain runoff to the relocated culvert section. We have catch basins in the parking lot area, which will collect the stormwater and direct it to a hydrodynamic separator unit to provide adequate, proper treatment. And that will outlet back into the existing culvert, as it does today. We have two water connections. We have a four-inch fire... Six-inch... A four-inch fire connection, a two-inch domestic service. Those are in blue, near the right-hand side of the plan. And we've got one eight-inch sewer connection in green down the center of the structure there. We're proposing a nice, robust planting plant to clean up the area and make it more appealing. We've got plantings along Pine and New Ocean Street and around the building, so it'll really clean up that intersection. You can see a bit of the color palette for the site down below, showing some of those proposed plantings. So it'll really look nice all throughout the year as it transfers through these different blooms. Bodometric plan. We're minimizing any light spillage into abutting lots. We've got a small amount of light that goes into New Ocean Street, but there's street lighting there, so that's unlikely to have any impact. All lighting will be downward-facing and dark skies compliant and shielded as necessarily to ensure that there is no glare. So these are just some of the site details. At the intersection of 10 New Ocean, we'll... We're proposing a flagpole. There's already a flagpole there, so this will be a nice new one to replace that. We've got some screening shown around the generator and the transformer pads. And to the left, we've got some photos of what the outdoor smoking shed and the garbage area will look like. So thank you. We'll give it back to Yara to go over traffic and parking.
I think it's me.
Oh, was it you?
Yeah. I'm Holly, it's back. So this slide has the quick summary about traffic and parking, some of the key details. On parking, the thing that, I guess, sticks out the most, the most frustrating for some folks, are peak hour and... Peak hour in the morning and peak hour in the afternoon. So the AM peak hour predicts nine trips, the blend of in-and-out coming from this development, which calculates out to averaging one car every 6.6 minutes, either exiting or entering, that currently is not on the road now. And in the afternoon, evening, peak hour, they predict 10 trips, which is roughly one car every six minutes, either entering or exiting, that currently is not happening on this site. And regarding parking, this is also, we have heard many, many times, a sensitive point with the neighbors and the community. We know that this is a high... There's a high level of concern about parking. So we want to address, I guess, how we've come at this design and number. So the proposal, the plan in front of you includes 35 onsite spaces. We have 41 units. So this is... This parking ratio, which is about 0.85, is on par with the car ownership ratio at the Mashan. Different location, different population at that building. So the number of spaces, BBH feels, is more than adequate here at Veterans Crossing. We know that the neighbors are concerned. So there are a few things that I just want to point out. At the Mashan, there is, quite honestly, higher income bands in that development. So the people that live there have more money to own cars, pay for cars, insure cars than here at Veterans Crossing, where we are serving many more units, serving very low-income veterans and seniors. So of those units, we don't expect much car ownership. In addition, at the Mashan, we knew that we had ample parking because also at the Mashan, it was a concern of the neighbors there. And it's also adjacent to the park. And very limited on-street parking there. And so the ratio was the ratio. And it's really vastly meeting the need. It's overparked there. In addition, we didn't restrict anything for residents when they moved in. So anyone who had a car came with a car and keeps a car. You know, perhaps there could be a change in that situation. But we feel very confident with this ratio, with 35 parking spaces here at Veterans Crossing, mostly because we expect car ownership to be lower here. In addition, the ITE estimates, which is the Institute of Traffic Engineers, for this development is between 25 and 27 spaces. So even assuming that this is residence, we still have extra spaces for... At a maximum, there would be three staff members onsite at a time. That's 30. And then five extras for maybe visitors. And this assumes that everyone who has a car is actually home at the same time. So we're confident that this can work. So I just wanted to talk that through. I don't mean to talk about it too much. So thank you for that. Architecture.
Does anyone hear me? Hi, my name is Christopher Carland. The project architect, I'm with TAT. I'm going to walk you through our project a little bit and, you know, hopefully help answer some questions here. So the design inspiration for this was kind of looking at the context. Everything was around us, kind of Swamp Scott coastal design, kind of making this building feel more residential, as well as understanding how do we address and activate the first level and engage all the visitors and tenants who are in there for their amenity spaces. So you want to go to the next slide? So just kind of going into the context of the site. I'm sure everyone's familiar with the neighborhood itself. There's a lot of gabled roofs, a lot of porches. There's a lot of gambled roofs, playing with occupied attic fields, double-hung windows, you know, very traditional New England coastal-style architecture. Next slide. And so then you kind of come to our main perspective. This is the entry of our building. So kind of taking that traditional feel, we've got the base, the middle, and the top of the design, right? And so I know this is a three-story building, but to make this building not feel as large, we tried to make it feel more like an occupied attic space. So the third floor is actually tucked in within the gabled and gambled roofs of the roof to create this roof well. That roof well actually acts as a screen for all the mechanical equipment that will be sitting on the roof, as well as any penetrations of pipes, to make this feel, again, less like a commercial building of apartments and more like a residential feel. It also allows for the neighborhood and context of scale. So you have at the base, we have, you know, traditional lap siding with the banding that comes across with a wraparound porch. The wraparound porch is a way of creating that entry point off the parking lot, as well as wayfinding to know where you come into the building. The turret is also a way of... It's just at the corner. Again, wayfinding aspect. You'll see in the back of that, on behind the entry, is a roof deck kind of peeking out to the side that is for the tenants to use. We use on the second floor and third floor is a shaker-style collaborative siding. And again, as well as like these shed roofs and gabled roofs to kind of conceal everything. If you want to go to the next slide, go to the floor plan. So here's the first floor plan. And as you can see, I will talk about in a minute about how the amenity spaces work, but to kind of anchor yourselves in, we have all the residential units themselves on the first floor, all towards Erie Street and towards the back of the site. We have a few residential units along Pine Street itself, but the majority are towards the more residential aspects. And if you want to now go to the next slide, I'll talk about the amenity spaces and kind of how that feels. So as you kind of come in, you're coming in through the entry point, which is that blue in the bottom. You have this open space for the lobby. You have your mail... Your mail area, your mail area across from like a trash area for people to go through their mail, et cetera. The main stair to kind of get up, and you have the elevator bank right behind that. When you come in, you have the management office directly to your right, so everyone can see people coming in and going as they come in. As well as to the right of that is a space for Soldiers On to be able to use for their use. The main community space, active space, to be designed still, is that giant pink area along the parking lot. That actually embraces this wraparound porch and allows for the tenants to kind of come in and out and use and sit in that space with chairs across the front along Pine Street. It also allows for that ramp access to kind of get up from the parking lot level to the first floor level, because we're in the floodplain zone. So we're going up to the first floor itself and using that ramp and that wraparound porch to kind of conceal this space. Trash, it'll all be coming out to the trash room is behind the package room. Trashes will all be barrels coming out. All the tenants will drop them off within their barrels themselves, and then maintenance will take it out through the back and to the dumpsters themselves. And then we have a fitness space in the back, which looks at the back of the site itself, which will have trees and fences and a little bit more private, not having everyone on display as they're working out. If you want to go to the next... Sorry, if you want to go to the next slide. This shows you our upper floor plans. So the second floor and the third floor are very similar. Even though, again, we're hiding things within the attic space, it's really just playing with the eye on how things work, right? And so the second floor, the only difference is you actually have the roof deck that's off of it. The roof deck is directly across from the building's laundry room. So that way, tenants will be able to hang out in the roof deck while they're doing the laundry, have this indoor/outdoor spaces, again, towards the back of the site and the parking lot to create a little bit more privacy from the neighborhood. They have the trash rooms as well on each floor, right near the elevator for, again, maintenance to be able to take it out. Turn to the next slide. This kind of shows you how our roof well is working. Now, we're still in the very beginning of the design here with the mechanical systems, but we have spoke with our engineers and kind of had them do a very preliminary layout of what would be up here to make sure that we can fit it all and, you know, how that would all kind of work in there. And as you can see, all these gabled roofs and shed roofs actually concealed this roof well space itself to hide all this equipment. Because this is commercial electric, there'll be one ERV unit with a system. So there'll be one bigger unit that that splits for all the other units that are in there to be controlled. If you want to go to the next slide. This is a typical one-bedroom layout. All these units, because we're active adults, senior housing here, they will all be compliant with kitchens and bathrooms having... The bathrooms will all have roll-in showers, and all the kitchens will have wall ovens and cooktop surfaces. This will allow for any unit to be converted into accessible as needed for aging in place. We will have the standard amount required of accessible units as well, but every unit can be converted, and we'll have all the basic essentials there for them as they do that. If you look at the slides, the images is kind of the feel of what our interiors team, who is not here today, is kind of envisioning for this project. It's kind of coastal, cooler feel, warm feels to things, very much kind of blending in with the neighborhood itself. Go to the next slide. So here's our elevation along Pine Street, and that's where you'll see the wraparound porch to the left for the entry. To the right, you'll see the door... see the door over there. That is the, the door for the stair number two that actually gets you out to grade, which is lower than first floor. Um, there'll be an internal ramp in that stairwell to allow people to egress out to grade for safety. Um, and if you go to the next slide, this will show you, this is a building section, kind of how this mechanical roof well's working and how we're concealing the equipment that's in there. Again, we're showing arbitrary equipment up there for scale and size to show you that it can fit and kind of what we're dealing with. Um, and if you want to go to the next slide, yep. Here's a couple perspectives. So, the upper perspective kind of shows you what we're envisioning for this roof deck terrace amenity space. So, we're going to have this trellis, this trellis element that kind of creates a canopy shading for the people below, as well as tying into that roof banding system around, uh, that's going around that building. In the back of the site, well, uh, back of that porch will actually be a lattice screening to create privacy from the people on the deck versus the neighbors behind. So, that way, they don't need to have that interactions if they don't want to. But along the parking lot, it'll be a lot more open. And if you look at the image in the bottom, uh, right, that's the image from Erie Street. Uh, we now, as Jacob mentioned earlier, we set that, uh, the building further off of Erie Street. So, it allows us to have a little strip of grass along the street, then your sidewalk, and then some grass, and then the building. Um, next slide. Uh, here's a couple, here's a perspective. Um, don't mind the building in the upper image. That has now been demolished, but Google Earth has not caught up yet. Um, but you'll see the upper image is what it was looking like, and then the, uh, bottom image is what we're proposing it will look like. This is the scale. This is how it will fit within the context of the neighborhood. Again, we were trying to be very sympathetic of understanding that we, this is a residential neighborhood, and we don't want this behemoth of a building or anything to kind of dominate any. So, we wanted everything to kind of feel like it blended in with its environment. If you go to the next image, next slide, you'll see perspective down Erie Street. Um, and same thing, the upper image is current, and the lower images are building within Erie Street. As you'll see, it's now set back off of Erie Street. You have, as again, that sidewalk with the grass continuing across. And again, the sense of scale and size of neighboring buildings is very much on par. And if you go to the next slide, uh, so here's a perspective from the corner of Erie and Pine Street. Uh, and again, this is just showing you, I know the street would just, you know, pull out from the houses not being there, to show you what this actually will look like, uh, from this perspective and kind of how we're turning around the corner here. And then, last slide, next slide. Uh, so here's an aerial of the overall site and the building itself and how it will be sitting within the property and kind of its context within the environment. I'll turn it back over.
Thank you. So, I guess a quick recap or highlight of the community benefits. So, first of all, we're responding to the very much-needed senior veterans housing to create new affordable housing. All of these units will count to Swam Scott's subsidized housing inventory. There are forty-one units. We are redeveloping a town-owned parcel, um, that I would say is underutilized right now and using a ground lease structure. It's, this development is smart, growth-oriented, and sustainability-focused, and has access to transit. We pay real estate taxes on this development, similar to at the Mashawn. So, the assessment might be a little lower than a market rate development of a comparable size, because our rents are lower, but we do pay real estate taxes. And also, this proposal's consistent with Swam Scott's housing production plan and master plan goals. And next steps from our point of view as a developer. Um, we had a meeting last week with the town's department heads and received some comments there. I think that made it into your package. Um, we have a conservation commission application process that we need to go through because of the floodplain, because of the floodplain. Um, we also have upcoming funding deadlines. So, this development's a hundred percent affordable. It relies on state and federal funding, and, and we need to be, we need to apply and be allocated it. So, we have applications coming up to the North Shore Home Consortium and to the State Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So, we're excited to be here, and we are hoping for a timely review of this development so that we can be ready to create affordable housing as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all the information. Um, I first want to give the board some opportunity to ask any questions that you might have. Does anybody have any specific question?
No questions.
I have a few, but, um, some of these might get, um, answered as we go. Um, one thing I was wondering on our site plan, we don't have, we don't see the, um, the structures on Curry Circle to see how close those homes are to the, um, to the building. Um, and I'm thinking particularly sort of the smoking shed and the dumpster and the, um, the generator that are on that line, um, because I can't see where the structures are. And when I look at it on aerial view, there's a lot of trees, so it's hard for me to tell kind of where those properties are. I'm not sure if that's something that can just be commented with the.
Yeah, uh, if you go to, back to this slide, this might provide a little bit of context. So, uh, you can see there that, you know, approximately where they are, but we can certainly add, uh, add dimensions to those in the upcoming plan to show them on the plan. That's not a problem at all.
Thank you so much. Um, and then my question about relocating the culvert, um, I've been told that that's something that's going to be funded through grant funding. Is that something that, has that funding been secured, or is that still in the process? And then, is there sort of a contingency plan if that funding doesn't come through for moving that culvert?
We'll include it in the request to state, state funding. But it is, you know, it's something that can be qualified as town contribution as well, because it's having to help with it. So, it will also, you know, help strengthen our, our, our position. But we will have contingencies in terms of if this level's not like, or if that's something we don't, the project may not go ahead without.
Without doing that?
No.
Okay.
We will go without this. We will definitely find the sources for it.
Um, and then, the other question I had that kind of involves that Curry border, the, the homes that are on Curry Circle, does, there's, all the image, images, even the images with the building show a lot of trees there, because there are a lot of trees there. But I'm not sure what side of that property line, are those on the homeowner's property, or are those on the parking lot property? And will, do we have kind of a number of, is there any, is there any plan that shows us what trees will be removed, um, if any, or what trees will be protected, et cetera?
Yeah, if you want to go to the demolition plan, I know it's a bunch of slides. Oh, there you go, right there. What? Yeah, so, uh, along the border there, I think we're removing four trees, uh, where the parking lot is, and then, I think, six additional trees. Some of those have already been taken down by Gino and the town. Uh, we have had a arborist out to the site to identify tree protection zones, um, to determine which trees could be saved, and we're saving those. Uh, we could certainly make that a little bit more clear on the plan here. Um, and then we're, we're not removing any trees that are off of our prop, our property line. So, all of those trees are on our side of the property line and will be replanting along the perimeters of the site to reestablish a buffer.
So, there will be trees going, um, there will be new trees planted between the parking lot and Curry.
Yeah, so whatever trees are on the opposite side of the property line will be staying there, and then we'll beef up that buffer with trees and shrubs to make sure that the parking lot is screened well. Yeah. Oh, if you wanted to go up in the, yeah, right there.
So, are those arborvities, like tall things that will grow tall, or what's along that? Because it looks like a very narrow space.
So, it's, it's, it's arborvities with trees at either end, and the reason that we're not putting any new trees in that strip right there is because there's a culvert right beneath it. So, uh, it may inter, you, you may not be able to get the tree to grow on top of the culvert. Um, we can certainly try, uh, but what we're showing right now is shrubs.
Okay, so those aren't arborvities on that? That, that's nothing tall between the...
No, it's arborvities and shr, will be there, but also some shrubs to kind of make it a little bit more decorative-looking. So, we-
Can we be more specific? So, Yara's moving the cursor, sorry to interrupt, but, so closer to Erie Street.
No, I think we're talking about right where the parking lot is between parking-
Yeah, I'm talking about the, the properties on Curry Circle.
I just want to, her cursor was, oh, sorry, I was. This area at the parking lot.
Yeah, I don't think your cursor is showing.
Yeah, I'm not seeing that, but that's, that's okay. I think we know the, sorry. Yeah. Um, so, yeah, I guess just if you have on those, on, on your plan, um, just identifying what trees are going to be there and, and the heights and, and sizes.
Absolutely. And we'll, I think, uh, I don't know if we've submitted the arborist report yet, but we'll also submit that if we haven't.
Okay.
Is it? Okay.
Right. Um, and then, I had a question, and I, I know that there's some, um, some traffic and parking, um, information in our packet about sort of sightlines and everything with the building. The only sightlines that weren't mentioned that I'm, was a little concerned about is the, um, the exit and how close it is to the structure. Um, not so much for cars, but for sidewalks. So, being able to see like a kid on a scooter coming down in front of, um, coming down Pine Street as you're exiting, not so much as you're entering, but as you're exiting that parking lot.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
So, I don't know if you can have, um, I don't think that was mentioned. The sight, the, the sightline visibility was only mentioned entering the parking lot, but not exiting.
Oh, well, we can absolutely provide sightline measurement for that.
That would be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, and then, um, you are asking for a waiver for lighting, but then in the presentation, it sounded like you were going to meet all the, um, lighting.
So, the lighting will be shielded, but there's some lighting that, uh, gets into Pine Street and Erie Street. So, technically, it's light trespass. However, the roadway has its own lighting. Um, so, they really, that light trespass is going to be negligible compared to, because the street's already lit.
Yeah, so there's no light trespass in any of the resident, onto any of the residential apartment?
There's a minor, like, um, zero-point-one to zero-point-two lumens, but that doesn't take into account the, uh, any of the plantings there, uh, and also the shielding that's going to be applied to it. So, it'll have house-size shielding on the backside of the lighting that'll block off the light from going backwards past the light pole. Um, we can update this to show the shielding and, uh-
Yeah, I think that would be great, if we can just have, and, and just where the, um, sort of, um, sorry, where the-
We need relief.
The relief is needed, yeah.
Okay, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, where the relief is needed, so that we can be, so we can understand exactly.
Yeah, I can clarify that, absolutely.
Um, and then, the, um, the other question I had was about the floodplain. I know that you've talked about that, about how the elevating out of, and we are meeting with the, um, uh, Conservation Commission, right, coming up?
Yes, twenty-third.
So, that will kind of address that. So, if there's a formal report for that, if that can be submitted with the, with the file, that would be great. Um, because what I heard was that it's, right now, you're at fifteen feet, but the floodplain is sixteen feet.
Well, the floodplain is at fourteen feet. Uh, the plans now are at fifteen feet, but, uh, per our meeting with DPW, uh, we're going to bring it up another foot to sixteen feet.
Okay, all right.
So, that'll be two feet up above the floodplain elevation.
Okay, okay. That's great. And that'll all be included and-
Yes.
What, what does that mean in terms of, for a layperson to understand?
So, basically, the floodplain elevation is the elevation that, uh, the floodwater will reach in the hundred-year storm. Uh, this is a, it's a floodplain subject to coastal storm flowage. So, that's basically during a storm or whenever you've got your hundred-year storm, how far the ocean will come in and what elevation that'll come up to. So, when it floods, you'll have water up to elevation fourteen, filling the whole area, but you'll have the building entry two feet up above that water. And having it two feet up gives us some resiliency to climate change in the future.
Okay, thank you.
And then, I'm sure this is coming, but, um, we just would love to make sure that we have a very detailed construction management plan and a detailed, um, pest management plan during construction, um, as part of it, part of it. Um, and then, the one area, and this is just only, I know these are representations, so, the sidewalk area, there, when, whenever I'm looking at some of these, um, aerials and things, you can see the sidewalk that's going, the new sidewalk is going to be in front of the building, um, which I assume is going to be all new. Is that correct? That's not going to be any sort of reuse? And then, I don't see anything that then connects over to where the dispensary is during that, where that little bump out is. And I think there's something there now, but I just want to make sure that we're not, oh, I can see it in that one. Okay.
Yeah, we're contin, we're just continuing to walk down along.
The walk down, okay.
Yeah, it's kind of hidden a little bit here.
It's hidden in some of them. I just want to make sure that that's definitely.
But we'll have, um, you'll have the curb line, then you'll have, I think, two feet of, uh, green space. So, you'll be able to put some street trees along there, just like what we have at the Mashawn. And, uh, then you'll have the back of the sidewalk and the building.
And then the bump out there?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. Um, those are all the questions I had right now, but I know that, you know, we'll have, we'll have more. But, um, I also wanted to, um, open it up to, um, to community comment. Um, I want to make sure everybody understands that no decisions are being made. This is just part of the process. We'd love to hear, um, your concerns early on in the process. So, if anything can be addressed, we can get to it early. Um, understand that as a zoning board, our, um, our jurisdiction is very limited when it comes to forty-B, so, just to have everybody's expectations where, you know, where they should be. Um, also, if someone, if you agree with someone who already said something, feel free to just say, "I agree." We don't need to, um, restate every single comment, but just say, "I agree with the, the comments that stated," just to kind of keep things moving. But, um, if anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand. We'll call on you, and then, um, just state your name and your address. If anybody has any questions? No, no questions?
I see somebody over here.
Hi. Oh, and can we just, we're just going to get you a microphone. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alicia McCarthy, um, and we own the house at nine Pine Street directly across, um, from the project. Um, I know, Heather, you had mentioned, um, questions about pest control. I think pest control is with, um, a renovation of a house on our back lot, the Boynton Street project, and the demolition of the building that was on the Veterans Crossing site has created a huge rat problem.
Wow.
Already. And I can't imagine what forty-one units of trash in, um, dumpsters outside is going to create in addition to the construction. Um, so, I would also be interested in what the pest management, um, plan is during and after construction. Um, I briefly read through the stormwater drainage, um, report. I don't fully understand all of the, all of it. I just know that in our area, we do have a huge problem with the Stacy Brook underneath and the runoff. And when they do come out to clean the, um, the lines, Gino has actually been really great. Anytime I call him and tell him my toilet has exploded, when they try and to flush it a different way, he, they mark it down and don't use that line again. I'm just wondering what the town's plan is with the developers and the engineers. Like, how's that going to work if it can't?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. And they are moving that culvert as part of this project, so, the Stacy, Stacy Brook. So, um, I also read that plan and need, don't fully understand it. So, we do have a consultant that's going to help us, um, to understand it all, and we may do peer review of that plan to help us understand it. So, I agree with you that that's something that we really want understood. Um, so, that's something that's on our radar. It's on the town's radar, and, um, it's on the board's radar, and it's on the developers' radar as they're doing that as sort of a, um, a plus to the town, is sort of moving that and taking care of, hopefully, some of the problems that that's been causing.
And we're already coordinating with Gino to do a capacity study and a camera evaluation of the line to make sure that, um, well, first, just to clarify, uh, the sewer is- well, first, just to clarify, uh, the sewer is, isn't connected to Stacy Culvert, it's not a s, shared storm sewer, so, um, and I know Gino had been, had said that there was some issues in the sewer there, but I just wanna make sure that we understand that those are two separate things.
They, they are, but they aren't.
Yeah, but, but yes, we, we will be doing-
There are some problems there, but we know that sewage is getting into Stacy's Brook and getting out to the ocean, it's a, it's a hundred year problem.
Well, we'll be reviewing the capacity of the pipes, we'll provide calculations, uh, for Gino and also for you to review, and, um, we're, do a camera inspection to make sure there are no blockages or damage to the pipe.
That's great, thank you, yeah, so if anything, hopefully that'll improve that, that, um, for the neighborhood, we're hoping, and that's something that the developer is working with the town to try to, um, you know, make better for us.
And then my other concern was just in the plans that I saw, it doesn't look like there's much screening or landscaping in the front where the building is on Pine Street. Um, currently, there's some shrubbery along the fence of the VFW, there's no entrance there, there's only a small window. Um, so I think outside of, um, one A being busy during traffic times and like summertime bushwalks, for living on a, the corner of a busy, busier road, we have relatively good privacy, and it seems like now there's going to be lawn chairs and activities and lots of people directly in front of our porches where we drink coffee and sit on the steps with our kids and let them ride their scooters in the morning. So I'm just wondering, is there a way to put some more privacy, um, on that, that side of the building? Because currently we have, there's no real visualization with that.
So you're talking about the, the area with the wraparound porch, so it definitely looks like we had some, yeah, okay, there we go, there's some plantings along that corner, and then the taller plantings are more where the building sets back, um, is what they have now. I mean, if that's something that, I mean, that is the en, main entrance to the building, and that is a used, you know, going to be a used space for the residents, um, who will be your neighbors, um, so I don't, I don't know if that's something that's, where you would put tall screening things in front of, I believe, right at the entrance.
I don't understand all of the zoning bylaws, and, but I think I read something about preserving the, at least partially or at least fifty percent or something like that, um, of the privacy that's already there, and it seems like there's, there's no, like, there's only one outward facing window towards us, um, and a bunch of shrubbery along the chain link fence, and now it's going to be an open space where people are looking at us, a parking lot, and then a bunch of windows overlooking our yard.
Yeah, there isn't a lot of, um, sort of zoning criteria here, there's definitely opportunity to work with the developer and see if there's some ideas that they have, or some ideas that the architect or the landscaper have to sort of soften that for you and soften that for the neighbors, um, as far as zoning guidelines, there, there isn't, in, in our situation with a comprehensive special permit, it's a little bit different than the traditional zoning bylaw, but, um, we're definitely, you know, I think this is a developer who wants to be part of the neighborhood, they want to be inclusive, so I think that's something that, a conversation that, um, I'd love to hear if you have any ideas of, of how that works on Pine Street versus, I know that there was a lot of talk from planning to move your, to move off of Erie, um, but now that, I don't know if that then brought you closer to Pine or, or how that worked, but. Okay.
And then my last concern was just the traffic impact. In the traffic report, it states that the nearest major intersection, um, to the entrance is Pine Street and Erie Street. I, maybe I read it wrong, but I don't think that's accurate, I think Pine Street and New Ocean is a pretty, um, major intersection, definitely more than Pine Street and Erie Street, and if that was considered the major, um, intersection that they were kind of looking at, I don't think that the traffic impact was necessarily accurate.
I think some of that might have been for sort of visibility, because this building won't affect visibility at the, um, at the Pine Street, um, at the, um, at the intersection you're talking about, it is, it's affecting visibility at the Erie Street, um, but if there is further traffic study that can be done that would incorporate both, both intersections, we can discuss that.
And just that, the way that the, when the local was built, the way that they built the curb to jut out, um, I think the intention was to slow people down and create less, a, a less dangerous, um, intersection. But currently, the way it is, there are two cars, a, a car coming down Pine Street, turning onto New Ocean, sitting at that stop sign, a car coming from New Ocean cannot fit around the corner. Um, so having more traffic going that way, I don't know if the plan is to keep that designed the way that it is.
Yes, it is to keep that, and I mean, that is definitely was done for, for, like, just like you said, for safety, so people aren't taking that turn at, you know, because it's such, it's not a right angle turn, so people are almost taking it straight, um, at least now it's forcing people to realize that they're at an intersection.
I think people just come closer to the curb where kids are coming around the corner, my kids in particular. Yeah, it doesn't slow them down.
It's not slowing people down.
Um, and there were also three accidents right at that pole, directly at that intersection between, just in a matter of like three or four months over the spring and summer, um, where they had to shut down the street for a, a little bit while they fixed the lines that were attached and the pole, the pole's been replaced twice, um, so I don't know that.
So, yeah, no, that's definitely something, something to be on our radar, and I think that we should, um, we have a, um, we have, traffic and safety should be a concern, and I think we should, we can definitely have that on our radar as something to look further, look further into and to talk to sort of the, um, town officials as to what sort of reports they've had on that intersection so far since the change was made, 'cause I'm assuming people have been trying to sort of study that, and if it's more accidents, when the goal was fewer accidents, we should be looking at that even separately from, from this project, so that's good to know.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to talk?
Hey, doing? Steve Gadman, Eleven Pine Street, uh, right next door, uh, to them. I may have misunderstood earlier, um, that something was mentioned about a second stairway in the front of the building? Did I misunderstand that, or?
No, it's two stairs to the building.
So is it gonna be both set of stairs?
One, one was meant for egress, like, emergency.
For emergency?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not, it's not accessible from the outside.
Okay, all right, that was one of, one of the concerns. Um, the, the other one that, um, we had emailed in about, um, the other staircase that is there, um, and people either just visiting or if they have food dropped off, that instead of maybe going into the parking lot with the staircase right there, right at the corner, they're gonna use Pine Street as, as a regular parking lot. And we're not so much concerned about, like, they're gonna be, they're gonna be our neighbors, and it's not the people there, but if the people living there park, park out in front of the building, people that go to the local now park in front of our houses, and the attitude that we get is, "Call the cops, by the time they get here, I'll be gone." And it's an, an everyday occurrence, um, that they park there, and if, with the residents there, and then with us, uh, us being in front of, front of our house, it's just, it's gonna, it's gonna create a huge problem. Um, one thing that I would like to see, uh, not just me, us, that we would like to see, I didn't see it in the plans, was a fence to divide the two parking lots, um, going into Veterans Crossing and the local, because what's gonna happen is they're gonna park right on Pine Street and cut through the parking lot, if not, pull into that parking lot park and, and go into the local. And I know it sounds crazy, but it, it will happen, it will happen, so we would like to have a fence to divide those two, two parking lots, so it's gonna force them to walk around and maybe not park, park out there.
Is the parking on Erie, is it resident only?
On Erie?
I mean, on, on-
On Pine Street, yes.
Yeah.
Yep, it's resident-
So it's posted all on both sides, resident only?
Yep, and it, it doesn't matter, if, if we say this is resident only, call the cops, I'll be gone by the time they, yeah.
I just wanted to understand that.
Yeah.
That's already, that's an enforcement issue that's cur, currently a problem.
Yes.
Yes.
That, that you're just envisioning becoming a larger problem.
Yep.
Which does make sense that it would. And so the question, the, the issue is, right now, right now, it would be illegal to just pull up to the front of that building and run in and drop off food and come back, because there, it's resident only, that whole street. If that building just showed up tomorrow, correct? It's all resident in front of where the building is going to be, okay.
Yep.
So some of that is gonna be an enforcement issue to, that needs to be taken seriously. Um, because that's gonna be another kind of obstruction to coming in and out of, people are, are often parked right in front of that space, coming out of that lot, you're gonna have even less visibility, um, if there's a lot of cars there, so I don't know how that could be marked, um, better to-
There's like parking apples, so.
To help with that.
It seems like having a parking lot being inviting for deliveries, you know, you're gonna have not just food delivery, you're gonna have Amazon, you're gonna have mail truck that's coming, or, you know, so I'm not sure what consideration there's been to how to accommodate deliveries, I guess that's the question.
Yeah.
Uh, the secondary stair that's used for egress, I don't believe that would be available for, um, drop off of food, uh, or mail. They would have to go into the main parking lot and come up through the entry to gain access to the building into the mailroom. Um, so we don't envision anybody, or at least we're not proposing to have anybody park on the street.
Right, I guess the problem being, the reason it will happen is because, I'm wondering if it's possible to have the stairs. I know that's inviting for people walking to the building from parking other places, but if, um, if, if the only way kind of in and out of the building was through the stairs that enter into the parking lot, as opposed to that secondary set of-
Oh, you're talking about, okay.
Um, not the side, not the, we're not talking about the back stairs.
No, coming off the other side of the front.
Off the other side, and so that you, at the main entrance, so that you kind of had to enter through the parking lot, so you couldn't really enter the building from the sidewalk in a way that would discourage people just pulling up for deliveries and would really encourage-
Does make sense.
I mean, that's just a thought, but there may be other ways to get, to really encourage deliveries to come into the parking lot. Um, and I know that this is going to be a, um, a building that has people that are there, um, you know, that are staying, their offices in that building, and they're going to be interacting with the delivery people, and they're going to be interacting with, um, the mail and the Amazon and things like that, so that can also be addressed by, by the employees to kind of encourage Amazon and stuff to come into the building. Into the lot, yeah. But if there's a way to do that architecturally or landscaping wise, to really encourage people to come in, um, I don't know if that's something you can think about and, and let us know when, when we meet again. Thank you.
On the, on the issue of the parking lot, the, the location of the trash, there's gonna be big dumpsters, right? Is there enough clearance in this parking lot for like a trash truck to empty those dumpsters? Can they get back there, 'cause I'm thinking about the giant trash truck on my, you know, right now.
Yeah, so, uh, we've did, we've designed it so that the trash truck can pull in, pull forward, uh, down the aisle, and then back up to the garbage enclosure, and then pull out, uh, to continue going forward. So, um, we've designed the circulation with that in mind to make sure that we can get trucks over there to pick that up.
Thank you.
Do you think you could point that out with the cursor, 'cause I'm just, I just don't understand where you're saying it is?
Where the dumpster's going? Yep.
Yeah, it's showing up, yep.
This is the dumpster right here.
Yep.
I think Jacob, you're saying that-
Take a right in there, continue.
So a truck is not gonna fit in there?
Yep.
I can't even fit out of my driveway.
Take a left there and then back up. Yep, that's how our turning analysis was done. Yep, so they'll never have, I mean, they'll just have to reverse up to the, up there, but they'll never have to do any weird maneuvering or turning around.
Is cars parked on both sides of the street?
They will not be, I can't get out of my driveway, if there's two cars parked on both sides of my driveway and one parked across the street, I cannot get out of my driveway, which is why I do not park in my driveway unless there's a snowstorm. So I don't see how a garbage truck is gonna fit there, which is right across the street from my driveway.
So is that with, um, was that analysis, that radial analysis done with, um, both, assuming cars on both, parked on both sides?
Well, I think what she's talking about is Pine Street, which again, I mean, if they're parking there illegally, that's really-
Residents can park there, so it could be, and then all, everyone who lives-
All the people that are parked there have residents.
And all of the people who live here will have resident permit.
Yeah, so we do, we've done a turning analysis from the drive aisle, so that's gonna be off the curb for where the parking's, but, yeah, so, I mean, we could certainly add that and show that on the next plan iterations.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Uh, the, the other cons, uh, one, another concern was, uh, and I had, I had asked before about the equipment that's going on the, on the roof.
Yep.
About, um, how many heat pumps are going up there, how many air conditioning units, what's the decibel level of each one, the horsepower of the motors, um, and does it meet state requirements to not go above a certain decibel level? Um, and I had, I had asked for that before and still haven't gotten that information. So I, we, we would like to have that, so we can have a mechanical engineer take a look at to make sure that it's not gonna go, 'cause we don't wanna be into this project and say, "Oh, we didn't realize it was gonna be that, that loud."
Yeah, no, that's, that's part, that will be presented to us.
Understood, um, no, uh, there will be one major system, again, this is an all-electric system, so there's going to be one heat pump, uh, ERV system on, up there that handles for the entire building, so it's not going to be multiple units that are up there. Um, and we are working, you know, still very early, but we will be working with our engineers to make sure that all the equipment meets or exceeds, you know, uh, state laws and regulations for, uh, sound, and we try to obviously damper it as much as possible. Um, but again, it comes down to the equipment and the heights, that's what we're all trying to work for, and that's what the roof well as well is going to help with, by creating those walls, we actually were working with an acoustical engineer as well to help damper as much sound as possible to make it as quiet as we can possibly make it.
And do you know when you'll have those numbers, those, the decibels?
That won't, we won't be able to have that until we actually start designing the system itself, and-
You know when you're going to be doing that?
Once we start moving forward the project itself, where I could start bringing in engineers to design the system, construction documents.
What is your, uh, I guess your funding date or your target to submit to the city, or to, to the state, I'm sorry?
The state has a, um, like a, yeah, and, uh, you know, and then the final, but the fund, the actual, uh, funding will be in, in February. We would need, we, um-
We would need, you know, things like the zoning, we would need to be able, the comparable approval by then. But we need to, you know, for October, which is upcoming very soon, show that we have, you know, that we've gone through X amount of meetings and how we're progressing.
I mean, just back to the sound, um, and, and what your question was, since we may not have the exact numbers, um, we will at least have, we will know what the state, um, this, what the state limits are, and we will know that the, that it must meet those state limits, so there will be a benchmark if you're, if after the project you feel like it's not meeting, there's something to, to kind of benchmark against. I don't think we can give relief beyond the state requirements or ask for that, so that should be where you, you'd have your, your levels, if that, that's helpful.
Um, and I know we, it was already talked about, but, uh, question about the sewer, he had men, you had mentioned- you had mentioned about an eight-inch pipe coming out for, to attach to the sewer system. I don't know if they're aware, but the pipe that's out in the street now is only about three or four inches. So you're going from an eight-inch pipe down to about a three or four-inch pipe.
It's not, we're not handling sewer now, that's true.
Yeah, it's, it's a huge problem.
We have a big problem with the sewer, you took this big dump building here, hook this building to it. We can't do it. We can't, it won't bring out. It's like, well, they're only this big, and it comes out all the street.
So that's something that when we did the, when we were-
In two years now, have they fixed it yet?
No, no, just-
We're stuck in with sewer water everywhere.
Yeah, so-
Twenty-five units, swimming in.
So just to let you know, when we worked on the-
We're not completely area.
Okay. When we worked on the Elm Place project, we ended up having a full map of all the sizes of all the pipes, kind of that it was going to be through. I don't know if our DPW helped with that or who helped with that, but we did end up having like a very detailed map of all the pipes and everything that was going through. So, and then we had that-
The pipe capacity study.
Okay, and then we had that peer reviewed as well, if I remember, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we'll, we'll be doing that. So we'll be having a full, kind of, hopefully we'll have a full map of all the pipes and you can, like I said, work with, you know, to get that to us, and then we'll have that reviewed and everything.
Yeah, and there'll be a certification that it's gonna be-
Yeah, so everything will be, will go through all the steps. Is there any, is there any other question?
Yeah, I was just wondering, all the pictures-
If you'd just state your name and address.
Teresa Gadman, 11 Pine Street.
Thank you.
All the pictures they show of houses that are near it are the two and three-family homes. They didn't show one of a single-family home near this building, what it looks like across the street, what our houses are gonna look like going down, seeing the building and our side. I would love to see that. I asked for it before too, so at another meeting we had.
So you mean sort of just a visualization?
It's like, they were showing Erie Street, they showed your house. Your house is larger than our house. They showed-
It's still large, right?
Yeah, I know, I know. But, and then they showed another house on Erie Street, which is a two-family home. They didn't show one single-family house what it would look like near this building.
So when you're, you did have some nice, sort of where you took the streetscape and were able to put the building in.
But that's, that's a two-family home.
So I guess the question is, is there a way to do it so you're seeing that kind of, if you can find a streetscape where you're seeing both sides of Pine Street, is there a way to kind of plug that in, or is that?
We could try playing with some views, but again, because of the houses, try setting this up, it's perspective makes it kind of difficult.
Yeah, to see two sides of a street from one.
Starting to see a fish eye of it, or it's kind of getting distorted, so you're trying to show it as you're driving down the street, kind of out of the building.
But it doesn't show, it doesn't show the other side, it just showed that other side.
Yeah, but I guess like, it's very difficult unless you had like this wide angle to see both sides of Pine Street, but if we can, if you can find something to kind of give a little bit of a visualization, thank you so much.
Of course I can.
All right, and did you, did you have a question over here? Did anybody else have any questions, or is there anybody on, it looks like there's someone online with their hand up?
Yeah, I have a question. Cesar Mahia, 27 Pine Street.
Hi, I'm sorry, can you just say, say your name, I didn't hear it.
Yeah, Cesar Mahia, 27 Pine Street.
Hi.
So, I may have missed it, but is there gonna be a loading zone from, for when these forty-one units move in? And also, are they gonna be adding like additional handicap swats on Pine Street, or is everything gonna be in the lot? And, sorry, I'm gonna throw three questions at you.
Yeah, no problem.
And what's the typical, what's the typical turnover rate for a building of this size, for this type of community? Like, is it gonna be like an Alston Christmas where we should expect something at a certain time of year? Or is it like, it varies greatly?
That's a great question. So let's just get them all. So the question is, is there any, there's nothing in the proposal to restrict any street parking whatsoever to be handicap accessible? There's nothing there.
In our parking lot, we have handicap spaces as is required by ADA.
And is there a loading zone, loading area? No. And what is, this might, do you know the turnover on the other similar properties?
I know that we have very high vacancy rates in our properties and generally little turnover. So there is not the December first-
Low vacancy rate?
What did I say? Very high.
I knew that's not what you meant.
I apologize. High occupancy rate, low vacancy rate, I apologize. So there's not a time of year when there are the most move-outs or anything like that. We pride ourselves as an organization as having people stay in our properties for a really long time, decades ideally, even though there are seniors when they move in, ideally they stay and age for a while. So we are used to move-outs when they happen, and they tend to be erratic and not all at the same time. And we would make sure, even at the move-in, when an empty building becomes occupied, that we are staggering move-ins so that it's, you know, not all at one time.
Okay, that's good to know, yeah. So did you hear that? Cesar?
Hi, I'm his wife, I'm Nancy Mahia, 27 Pine Street, and we heard it. I guess the concern is, will there be enough space for these move-in trucks? Just like Alicia was saying, that, that area is already narrow. And the concern is, will these trucks just park along Pine Street, or is there a dedicated space within the lot for these move-in trucks? Because I just assume that it's going to, you know, make some noise, disturb us a little bit, and it's, you know, not for a long time, but we wanna ensure that we're able to get out of our parking spaces and out of the street if, you know, as needed. So I think a consideration of like a loading zone for prospective move-ins is something to be considered.
I, oh, I was gonna say, I'd like to check with our property manager at the Mashawn and see how they deal with that, because it's a similar parking lot situation, there's not trucks parked on the street, and how do folks move in and out? So if it's okay to report back on that at the next meeting?
That'd be great, yeah, thank you. So you'll report back at our next meeting about that. And that is kind of similar to what we were talking about, just kind of encouraging trucks to not be parked in front and to be parked inside, and when someone's moving in, that can just be the requirement for movement.
Are there any furnishings, sorry?
Go ahead.
Are there any furnishings in the units that you're renting? If they just are completely vacant?
An interesting point. So first of all, all of these units are one-bedroom, one-bathroom. So the giant moving trucks that happen in single-family homes, I can't imagine that happening here. We typically provide basic furnishings if, for the very low-income units, especially if people come from homelessness into our property, so just at the initial move-in, but they still would have their own-
There's gonna be a bed already in the unit?
Some, some of them. We're not, cause some people have their own things, especially at the higher-
And how many square feet are the average units?
About six hundred or so.
That's a very, very small, right, so?
Yeah, so that's, that's, we're not talking large, big-
We're also talking low-income housing, so there won't be tons and tons of furniture going into these places, small.
I think to add one question over to the front of Pine Street, what is, what is the plan for, like where would the emergency vehicles go? Is it that same entrance and exit? And like, will they fit there as well? I don't envision them currently fitting anywhere there. My, I, my mother takes care of my children and she lives on Duncan Terrace, and if she has to pick my kids up after school, she parks on the street, not in their parking lot, because it is an older community, and there are often ambulances and fire trucks blocking. So as somebody who needs to get out to pick up little people and get to work, being blocked by driveway and my parking being blocked is a concern if they can't fit in there as well.
So for something like an ambulance coming to pick somebody up, there's adequate space, it's a two-way drive aisle, so you can get an ambulance in there. Fire access, I mean, if you've got a fire in the building, realistically, all bets are off. You're gonna put emergency vehicles wherever you have to to take care of that fire. And fire access is on Pine Street and Erie Street. A fire truck can pull in and out of the main parking area, and there's that green strip behind the building that's accessible to the fire department as well. So for people that need to be transported to the doctor or the hospitals via a van or a, a ambulance, there's room for them to pull into the site. And, you know, fire department's gonna bring the trucks where they need to be to put the fire out. And, you know, in an emergency situation-
I mean, fire trucks usually show up with the ambulance or before the ambulance.
They do, in our town, cause they're all EMTs, our fire-
We'll hope that they're not gonna be there for too long if they're coming to pick somebody up, take them to the hospitals, but-
Shows up quickly.
Buildings are all fully sprinkled, right?
Yes, yep. We'll have a, a fire suppression system built with a separate tie into the water line.
All right, you have a question in the back? Just make sure you say your name and address.
Vicki, Boynton Street. I just wondered, are the parking spaces gonna be numbered, assigned parking?
I don't think they will be, is the answer to that. Will any of those spaces be assigned?
We typically do not at our properties unless there's an accommodation that's required from a medical condition with a doctor's note or whatever that process would be, but typically folks work it out day by day.
Okay. That's, I'm a home health aide, I go to a lot of places, I have a lot of colleagues that stay overnight with patients, just thinking if it's all senior citizens, they could have, you know, a nurse overnight or a nurse's aide for four hours. I'm on Boynton, but we've got a new house coming in with more traffic, so even the overflow from ours is gonna, it's usually pretty empty, Boynton Street, but not when that new building gets filled up. It's just gonna be a lot of traffic, but that's the world we're living in.
I guess for some more information, how our property, our other properties work, typically the residents get a sticker so that it shows that they're residents and are allowed to park in the parking lot in an unassigned space, and often have visitors sign in and get a guest placard. And in the event that our parking lot is used by people for other reasons, we have contracts with towing companies to tow people without these stickers or visitor authorization.
Are there any more questions?
Can you just get the microphone?
Hold on, hold on.
Sorry, can I ask one more question, Cesar Mahia?
Someone, someone's asking a question here, but I'll call on you, I see your hand is up, thank you.
This is my first zoning board appeal meeting. I've heard several times that the developers have met with community members, I don't know what community members or neighbors they've met with, I don't think they've met with anybody who actually lives around the building. I'm wondering if this isn't, maybe we could set up a meeting after to tell, talk about like our personal concerns of the neighborhood?
Yeah, that's definitely something. You have held, have you held public meetings with, I know there's been select board meetings, but that are just sort of with the, with the butters?
Yes, and community meetings with Marzey and Gino at Reach Arts most recently, some of you were there. But it was my understanding, all the direct neighbors were invited too. But we are also willing to, folks that were there, hopefully got an email from our team, willing to meet individually. We'd be happy to meet with you individually, so please, let's talk after this.
Great, thank you. And then we had one person online with their hand up, but it's down now.
Sorry, yeah.
Hi.
I do have a more question, I don't know if I missed it in earlier briefings, but is there like a shadow study where we can see what houses are being fully affected? Cause right now I get a lot of sunlight through my front window, so I wanna see how that's gonna affect us with this massive building.
Yeah, we, we have not received a shadow study as part of our packet, so that might be something that we can request from, from the developer, but no, that is not something we currently have.
Did you plan to do one?
We can.
Yeah, I think that would be-
I, I think it would be helpful, we get, just getting in front of issues, I don't wanna wait till five months and then find out.
No, no, again, we'll, we'll pull it into our software, and we'll, you know, we'll print out a plan that shows what the shadows look like.
Great, thank you. Are there any more questions while we have?
You say you have three, didn't you?
Yes, if you'd just state your, state your name, and you're going to need a microphone. Does anybody have one here?
Yeah, I'd like to know where veterans were going, I think it's terrible, they should eat, they're, they're building away. None of them wanted to go, and I'm wondering where they're gonna stick 'em.
So-
My name is Gene Ledger, I've been in Swampscot for eighty-four years, I've been a town meeting member, founder of Little League, Shore Improvement Association.
So we are currently not hearing anything about the new location for the-
Pardon me?
We are not, this, right, currently the petition in front of us is for the Veterans Crossing, which is a housing development. The veterans, the VFW that was on that location, is being moved. I don't know any of the definite plans for that, that hasn't come before our board yet.
We don't have jurisdiction.
And we don't have jurisdiction over that at this meeting or forever, unless it comes before us. But, so that is not, not part of this hearing. But it's definitely something that you can ask-
So, so you have no idea, you're taking their, their, you know, their place that you gave them in, in good faith, and you're taking it away, and nobody knows where they're gonna stick 'em?
Well, I gotta say, I am, didn't take anything from anyone, we're a volunteer board here, but we are hea- hearing this particular project, but there's a lot of discussion I know about that project, and I think the select board is probably your best way into finding more information.
My husband was a veteran and went around the world submerged in the historic voyage of around the world in eighty days by Captain Beach, and they made a movie of it, and he's a Swampscot veteran and Swampscot fellow. And also we had Joey Hoag, who died on the Fletcher, that went down ten steps and, and was crushed, and he died, and he was a Swampscot fellow. And I, I wanna, I wanna see that our veterans get something out of it. You know, they're utilizing the words veterans like they're, you know, good guys and doing something for the veterans, but the veterans and utilizing the name veterans to, to name, you know, what they're building, but the poor veterans are not getting anything out of it.
So the, so the-
Reach Arts, Reach Arts is a terrible fit, and there's no elevator. So maybe Bad Breath will buy the elevator to put in the old Reach Arts building, maybe.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on with that project, but I do know that the, the veterans aspect of this project is that there is a veterans preference. If you qualify under the income threshold and you're a veteran, you will get preference to this housing before anybody else. So that's where the veterans part of this project comes in. But what, any sort of VFW or space like that is not being addressed by this board. Definitely talk to the select board for more information.
Well, I just hope that the veterans, that, none of them wanna leave there. I don't know what anyone's saying, but they, none of the veterans wanna leave that nice building that they have. I thought, I thought this building, I think at one time it was being discussed that it was gonna be twenty units, now it's forty units. I don't mind the twenty units. And then we got Duncan Terrace, which is a shithole, which I wouldn't, I wouldn't put, I wouldn't, I'm eighty-four years old, and I don't wanna go to that place, and what's renovate that place?
So if you, if, please, if you have any questions about this particular project, then we're, we're here, we've got these people here to answer them for us, but anything else will have to be another board would address.
But I mean, I, I think we ought to know where we're sticking the veterans before we take their property. I, I know it's town property, but it was given to the veterans.
Yeah, we'll definitely-
For their pleasure.
...board about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions that anybody has?
You might just tell people as well that this isn't their last opportunity.
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna get more information.
Yes, so yeah, we're going to be collecting more information from the developer, and there will be, there will be, this hearing will get continued to next month, where some of the requests we've just made, like a shadow study and things like that, if they're ready, will be presented. And we are also gonna meet with our consultant and- And we are also going to meet with our consultant and see if there's any other things that, that we may request. And so there will be another opportunity to hear some more answers to your questions and to ask.
If I may.
Yes, please.
I, I understand you had suggested that there might be some limited peer review. What we don't want to do is, is hopefully not wait until next month to deal with that and I just didn't know whether it would be possible to, for the board to authorize perhaps Marzie, Marzie to, to work on that between now and the next meeting.
Yeah, that is the plan, when we get, when we, unfortunately, the consultant that we hired wasn't available to, for this meeting, so we want to make sure that we have an opportunity to discuss with them and any sort of peer review and anything that we haven't requested that we haven't talked about today requesting, gets requested before next meeting, so you can get on that, so we're not behind.
Right, seems like the sewer and the culvert, definitely peer review, we're going to be looking for, I would expect, right?
Yeah, definitely.
And then it seems like there's a bit with maybe traffic peer review, with talking about access and having somebody else get another set of eyes on it, seems like those are likely.
Those are likely peer review, yes. And then anything, once we've, once, we'll, we'll make sure we get that quickly, so we're not, we're not losing a month by not having the consultant here today.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. All right. If no one has any more questions, we're going to.
Yes, to continue.
We're going to continue this to our, I'm going to say the right date, October.
Twenty-one, I have a mic calendar.
Yep, October twenty-first. To our twenty-first ZBA meeting, if we can just get a motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue.
All right, can you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would that be here?
That will be here, yup.
At seven, okay.
At seven o'clock, yup.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.
We're just going to have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.